Seven o'clock, it's May 23rd, 2023. For a few more minutes, I'm Elizabeth Spiny, Chair of the School Committee. Well, hopefully for, I'll still be Elizabeth Spiny. I'm Elizabeth Spiny, for a few more minutes at least, Chair of the School Committee, and I call the meeting to order. Thank you for humoring me. And I'd like to open the meeting first with public comment. Do we have anyone who'd like to make a public comment to the committee today? All right, seeing none, we'll move right into general business and reorganization. And first up, I will open the floor for nominations for Chair.
Madam Chair.
Amy.
I nominate Laura often. I second.
We have a nomination, a second. Laura, do you accept?
Sure, thanks.
All right. All those in favor? All right, congratulations, Laura.
All right, you're gonna be okay, Emily.
I assume you'd like to keep your Chair, now you like that spot.
Yeah, I mean it's-
You're willing to give it up if you-
It's up to GCTV, I think. But I think as long as it's good for you, then I think it's great.
All right.
All right. So, thank you. I will take nominations for Vice Chair person.
Madam Chair, I nominate Elizabeth Spiny for Vice Chair.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor? Okay.
No.
And we will need a, oh, I didn't ask if you were okay with that. Are you okay?
I voted myself, so yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we'll need a clerk. I can't make the nomination.
I'll nominate Amy Marr, do you want to do it, Amy? Sorry.
Well, somebody has to second it.
I'll second it.
I'm a little rusty at this, folks. I will accept, but I will, I will ask other members over here to help me with that report, because that is a lot at a certain time of year. But I will, I will take it, sure. Thank you.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing done, all those in favor? All right. Great job, everybody. That was pretty easy. Nice motion, Rebecca.
Thanks.
So, speaking off the agenda, I would actually like to welcome Rebecca to the School Committee. Congratulations on your win, and we're happy to have you. Please let us know what you need. Do not feel any pressure tonight or in the coming weeks. We're here to support you and get you up to speed as needed, although I know you're, you're ready to hit the ground running, so.
I hope so.
Welcome, but don't be afraid to ask questions. We try to keep things pretty informal. You've been to our meetings, so you kind of know how we work. It's a great group. As Rosca said, a lot of fun. So, um-
That's true, she did say that.
They're never gonna let anybody forget that that was the-
We're gonna repeat that over and over again.
I guess, and then people will be like-
Till everyone gets the message.
They just wanna have fun. But we're also very serious about what we do, which is supporting our learning. All right. And on that note, we're gonna invite Jennifer Cummings up for a college and career presentation. Yeah, oh, and is Sharon coming as well? Awesome. Good to see you both.
I'm here to support Jen, so yeah.
I love that. This is great. So, if you want to introduce your, both of you again, and just share a little bit what you do, and then go right into the presentation. And Jennifer, I am sure everyone in our home audience wants to know if there is any relation. I'm guessing there is not.
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay. Well, we've put the minds at ease.
Well, thank you for inviting us to come and share with you the work that Jennifer's been doing this year in what is, I imagine you recall, a brand-new role at the high school. We have had a relationship with Blackstone Valley Ed Foundation for a number of years. When I arrived four years ago now, it was apparent that we didn't really have the bandwidth and the resources to dedicate directly to establishing this relationship, and we needed to find ways to make that happen. And I think you'll see that we've reaped loads of benefits this year in a short time that Jen's been at the helm. So, we're excited to share with you the connections that we've made.
Great. Hi, thanks for, for having me speak tonight. It's nice to be able to, it was nice to be able to actually put this presentation together, because it forced me to really look back on this school year and really look at the successes and the accomplishments that this role has provided the district. So, thank you for allowing me to share. I'm just gonna, okay. So, as Sharon was saying, the first thing that I want to talk about, I guess when I was thinking about this presentation, I named it Connections, because really, that is what I think a lot of this role has done this year in many different areas within the district, but also with, in the Grafton community and the community at large. The first bullet, our relationship with the foundation. I would say this year, we were probably leaders in partnerships with the Blackstone Valley Foundation. We were actually, Grafton High School was recognized at the 2023 Annual Forum in April under the Educational Partnerships realms. And me, Sharon Buckley, Jason Cody, and Karen Mealy all represented the Grafton High School team, so we were excited to have that recognition. This is the first year that we had student participation in the free courses offered through the Ed Foundation. We were the first district to, with the generous support of Dr. Cummings, with the transportation, take our students to a trip to the hub and see the manufacturing and the welding classroom, and they were able to actually manufact-, or not manufacture, excuse me, but use the welding machines and have some fun there. We are the first district to create a job shadow program at the high school. We have had a student, we had a student job shadow at an automotive, an automotive tech shop. Actually, actually, we have had a student job shadow, but we also actually had a senior intern there. So, on one day, we had our intern there, and we had our job shadow student there, and they're working together, so it was really fun. Also, I'm looking for, I have another student looking for a job shadow in cosmetology, so if anybody has connections, you know, let me know. What else? Post-secondary planning tools, we're awarded or were granted through the Ed Foundation. These post-secondary planning tools, we really were, were able to kind of get our feet wet or our fingertips wet in the tools, learning how to use them. Next year, our hope is to actually embed these tools with the students and use them. It's called Next Gen Talent, it's a Boston-based company. One of the tools is a labor literacy market. It's job data. So, this company does job research, and I want to say the data is, encompasses three years. There's a Boston region, and then there's a central Mass region that was created specifically for the school districts in the Blackstone Valley region. But it shows salaries, it shows growth of career clusters or industry clusters, and where those, how fast those industries are gonna grow throughout the next course of five or 10 years, when some, when a lot, when our students will be searching for career paths. Career Spring, I love Career Spring. Career Spring is great. It holds, houses like 400 different career videos, so students can hop on Career Spring, put in a career cluster, put in, you know, business, put in something broad, and all these different career speaker series videos come up for them. And there's handouts, there's resources and handouts, resume building handouts, soft skills, interviewing skills. Career Spring's pretty great. So, we're really excited that we've gotten to know this tool and to bring it into the school, or to the high school next year. Local site visits, we've been out in the community, couple of local site visits, IDEX Laboratories, we have a student who wants to do a job shadow there, couple of other different places that I've traveled to over, over the course of the year. Many, you'll see many of these companies, the connections that we kind of made, or that I made going out to them, a lot of these organizations were participants in our College and Career Fair, so Connections are growing there. Community Connections, student field trips, we were able to take, we were able to round up some, some money and really take our students to a number of different field trips. Mass Bay Community College was a favorite. All the students, I have, all the students were given a, one of those button-up mechanic shirts, and we all took a picture in one of the garages under like a 1930 BMW. It was really cool. It was a cool experience. Volunteer Fair, couple of organizations that came to our volunteer fair, I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget. Community Harvest, YMCA, the YMI Sherry House, and Ecotarium. I want to talk a little bit about the Ecotarium, because I want to give an example of how relationships just build. The Ecotarium came to our volunteer fair, recruited some of our students for volunteer opportunities, ended up reaching back out to us, because they were so impressed with our students for job opportu-, they run camps, they run camps over school vacations, February, April vacation, reached back out, because they had camp counselor openings. This summer, they have lifeguard openings. So, that was a really cool, not lifeguard openings with the Ecotarium, I'm sorry, that's the YMCA. But Ecotarium was camps, summer camps, vacation camps. So, it was just, I wanted to note that, because it just kind of shows relationships and building and community involvement. Senior internship, we had a wonderful senior, the internship social last night, we had about 100 people at the social. We grew, senior internships numbers grew from 12 last year to 26 students participating this year. Our interns received two workshops presented by outside organizations, and I'll tell you, one of our students, yesterday I was chatting with her at the internship, and she had said to me, "You know, I didn't need the interviewing, I didn't have to interview for my internship, but I was interviewing for a summer job, and all that that I learned came in really handy." It was great. Our outside organizations did a really great job. I don't know if you know Access TSA, but they're a huge partner with the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation. Tom Gardner, the Director of Human Resources, is fantastic. He's on the Board of Directors at the Blackstone Valley Education, and they just did a great job with our students. So, a little bit about senior internship. Shifting gears a little bit, there's another part of my title, the College and, the College and Career Counselor, so I want to kind of talk a little bit about college connections and college support that our students received at the high school level. We had 55, I lowballed it, so it actually could be closer to 60, but we had 55 post-secondary information sessions held at Grafton High School. This was the fir-, I have to tell you, this was the first year that Grafton opened its doors to rep visits for post-secondary options, and our students, I mean, were great. You know, they got to know the pass system really quick, how it worked, how to sign up through Naviance, where to go, how to check in, how to ask questions. It, it worked great. College Admissions Panel Presentation, I want to point out our, this part, because again, I think it just points out connection and community and relationship building. We had four colleges, or colleges there. Tufts University was represented by one of our Grafton alums, and it was just amazing to see her. She now works in the admissions office at Tufts, and she came back to do the panel. And one of our, another one of our college reps is a Grafton resident. So, just bringing things together full circle, I guess. Webinars and resources between the Common Application, Naviance accounts, college boards, lots of webcasts, short webcasts were made for students, extra help documents were made for students, as they tried to navigate those nuts and bolts of turning the gears on their college application process in the fall of their senior year. Continuing on to college connections and support, I was invited to two, I was, I was invited on two college counselor college tours this year, and they were a blast to go to, and I, I'm gonna turn my page, because I wrote things so that I wouldn't forget to talk about them. But what I want to talk about with the college tours is, I have to tell you, the trend all over colleges is, through the pandemic, every single college or university that I have spoken to has all adapted a freshman transition program, a freshman success program, something of the like. And if they had one before the pandemic, they're strengthening it to, you know, soft skills, workplace readiness, all of that, resume building, interview skills, all of that stuff, co-ops, internships. And the fact that our students are getting that at the high school level is just amazing, that they're getting these experiential learning experiences, and also the skills and the readiness and the confidence that prepares you to, to be confident as you go out and make your path. So, I wanted to talk about that a little bit. College Essay Writing Workshop just happened, we had assumption in to do a college essay writing workshop. College and Career Fair happened in April. I want to say, we had 15 different states across the United States represented at our College and, College and Career Fair, so we were pretty, pretty happy about that. Connections have also been made between Grafton High School and Grafton Middle School. Eighth grade, eighth graders, all eighth graders received social emotional workshops along the self-awareness competency. I used, I, I love her, Dr. Marcia Frelick, she has a wonderful, she's a wonderful resource. She has a textbook called, College and Career Success, and she does great work aligning some of the competencies, I'm gonna speak specifically to the self-awareness competency, but aligning the self-awareness competency to a lot of the career and personality inventories that many schools across the, high schools have across the country. We have these in Naviance, the John Holland Career Interest Profiler, and the Myers-Briggs Personality, the dichotomies. She does so much great work tying in students' inventory results to having them explore their skills, their strengths, their interests, their values, positive thinking, problem-solving, growth mindset, so a lot of my, a lot of the lessons derived from her work. Depart, um, departmental, last but not least, certainly Connections were made within Grafton High School. Our October 12th College and Career Day was great. We had five, PSAT, SAT were running, we had five workshops for freshmen that freshmen kind of transitioned through. At the end of that, they had a guest speaker from Massachusetts Partnerships of Youth, and I will remember, I was watching the guest speaker, really powerful presentation. At the end of it, it was a lot of story sharing, and I was in the room, I mean, and students were just sharing stories, these freshmen, about different things based on the presentation. The facilitator, Corey Mashburn, had to leave, so Deb Goodwill, the, one of the Assistant Vice Principals, and I sat there with the microphones, because the students didn't, didn't want to stop. And at the end, Deb Goodwill, I'll never forget it, had all the students stand up in like mountain pose and yoga. It was really cool. Habits for Success, so Habits for Success is a class written at the high school. What I want to talk about this, they did the Career Interest Profiler, but what was really fun about this is we kind of, we went into Indeed.com, I had them, we, we found kind of a career path or a major, college major path that they were interested, and they went to Indeed.com, and they looked at real-world jobs, real-world openings. What does a job description look like? What are the requirements? What are the, what are the, what do you need in terms of education level? So, it was really cool for students. One student, his whole, they did a worksheet, his whole worksheet was on, his job was at Chick-fil-A. So, it was fun. They had, they had a lot of fun. Habits for Success, manufacturing classes, a lot of the seniors received individual appointments with me on resume building, but not only that, really, the importance of networking. I took seniors, career-bound seniors to a job fair sponsored by the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation called the Senior Scoop, and so it was really preparing them for networking. Hey, get your stuff out there, network, build, build a network, you never know who you're gonna meet, you know, what that connection's gonna look like. When we did take our students to the job fair, I'll have to tell you, every single student showed up at that job fair, folder in hand, couple of copies of the resume printed, and we had even one student print out artwork. She, graphic design, computer animation, you know, and she printed out and had, you know, some artwork to show. It was really cool. Lastly, Connections, I think this is my last, oh, yes, this is my last. Early college high school, you know, trying to, trying to streamline that process. You know, we came up with an early high school expectation and agreement document for parents and students. It's overwhelming. Students need to get, learn a new system, Blackboard, you know, they don't use School G, QuinSig uses Blackboard, they don't use your Grafton email, they use your QuinSig email, it's a lot. So, trying to streamline that, streamline the registration process. The expectation document includes all the resources that students at Grafton are able to use at QuinSig, and the Writing Center, the Math Tutoring Center, and really just helping them learn how to advocate for themselves at the college level and be able to communicate confidently to their professor. Yeah, I think, you know, so, these are just things, in the future, I'd love to, I think, you know, really look at the career planning tools, the next-gen career planning tools, and how we can implement that, and continuing to make departmental connections or connections within departments and kind of unify, unify them. And I'd love to do some sort of career speaker series, so keep, keep that on your radar. Thank you. Questions for your time?
Great job, thank you so much.
Okay.
I'm gonna add that that alum who came was also a school committee member's daughter, so another connection. Any questions from the team?
I speak fast, so, but I was trying to adhere to the time.
I'm trying to go first.
Yeah, man.
It's been a while. Hi, thanks for, for coming. Okay, so you just mentioned at the very end, having some kind of career speaker.
Yeah.
So, is, at middle school, they have the, the career day, and people come in. So, we haven't done that in, in high school, and what, what do you think that would look like? Would it just be?
Well, I can tell you this.
Yeah.
I think there's two ways that you can do it. I can tell you this, you can, I, I can have, people, people from the community can come in and talk about their specific career field and what they do on a day-to-day basis. I've done it at my previous district, and we had a career day. And the, the, the participants who came in, they didn't speak to their jobs, they didn't speak to their careers, they did a little bit, but really, the focus was on the journey. And that's, that's what I think is really important for students to hear, is that is the journey. Like, nothing is gonna be a straight line. It's gonna be zigs, and it's gonna be zags, and, you know, you're gonna change your major, that's okay. If you major in education, and next year it's like, that's okay. I majored in psychology, and my first job at a college was at Merrill Lynch. Like, so, I mean, if there's a zig, then there's a zag. I, I mean, and when you hear people talk about their journey and how they got from point A to point B to point C to point D, I think that, it almost makes, okay, so there's a path. It's not just like, so how do I become a child? So, on that activity that I did with Habits for Success, part of the worksheet, one of the students researched child psychologist or something along the lines. And I think when you look at child psychologist, and she was looking at all the criteria, okay, so I have to have how many years of school, I have to do this, it's like, okay, well, never mind, I need to find something else. But when you're really hearing about the journey and how you get to places, and, you know, how to deal with setbacks, I think that's the message. So, I went off on a tangent, but to answer your question, career speaker series could go two ways. It could be, come in, tell me about your job as an accountant, tell me the skills that you need every day, tell me what you do every day. And then it could also be, hey, tell me about your resume, you know, tell me about your journey. I haven't decided, we haven't decided as a school how that will look. But those are ideas that are flying through my head.
Yeah. So, branching off of this, the journey topic, which I totally agree, I mean, I, my, I started my career as an engineer, and now I'm an attorney. So, yeah, I've, I've given that same story to different people. But I wonder, you know, kids in high school, I mean, from freshman year, it almost seems like they have to start telling their story, right? Like, that's, that's what college, that's what you hear from colleges, they want to know.
I think so.
What's your story?
I think so.
Who are you? Who, what led you? So, it almost feels like, I, I just wonder if there's this kind of push and pull with the, with these kids, where, okay, I have to kind of figure out what I'm gonna be and who I am and, and where I'm going, like, I'm gonna be a psychologist, and, and I'm gonna share the story, if I want to get into college, I need to, you know, illustrate that. But then, we've all recognized that there is a sort of zig and zag, and there's, you know, different, you go into college, and then you realize, oh, there's all these other things that I could do, and maybe I like this part of psychology, but then I took this one class, and it's, and it kind of turned me in another direction, where I could use these same skills and, and a career that suits me even more, that's something I never thought about. So, I just, I, I wonder how that, if, I don't know, what, what your perception of that is, if, if kids are getting so pulled into-
I think you're right.
What's that?
I think you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think they have, I think that's, I don't think they have to be.
Yeah.
I don't think at 16 years old, you're supposed to know what you do, and if you do know, oh my gosh, great. And maybe you do know for five years, and then life changes, and you need to make a shift.
I think part of our job is to give students opportunity to explore, right? There are some students who are ready, they come into my office as a rising freshman, and they know what they want to do, and they are on their path. That's the minority. The majority of kids, it's our responsibility to expose them to as many different things as we can, and help them to, you know, figure out how to get there or not, or it's okay to change your mind. The, the career speaker survey program I envision may be happening during extended block or during lunches, we had a lot of success with that this year. We invited folks, whether it was a college rep or a community business person, to do lunch and learns or come visit and sit in the career center. It could be an extension of our College and Career Fair, there could be a speaker series, it could be part of our College and Career Day, where we do the PSAT, SAT workshops, and then speaker series, kind of like a speed dating kind of setup, so we're working on it.
So, I just want to make, you know, those kids who, who go into college and they want to explore, you know, they don't want to declare, is that still a thing? You don't, can you still not declare a major at freshman year? But, you know, they don't want to, they want to check different things out, and, and that they're not, you know, they're free to be able to do that. So, it sounds like that's, that's still a path for kids, because I, I hope so.
I hope what, I hope what you've taken from this as well is, is our focus isn't just college.
Yeah.
And it can't be anymore, right?
Yeah.
We can't be that narrow-minded and streamlined focus. We're broadening it to career readiness, school-to-career opportunities, different career paths, and how can you get certification programs out of high school, which can be very viable and lucrative options for students. So, we're, I think that's been a focus of this role too, is, is expanding it to more. We're trying to meet all of our students and not just those college-bound.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. I, I, well, it's kind of a question and a comment. My, so, there's sort of this big shift in the world around like work-life balance, and people are sort of demanding different things from their workplace. And something that I've thought about, sort of in retrospect with myself, and I talk to my kids about it, is sort of looking at, what do I actually want my life to look like? Not my career necessarily? And I'm just wondering, it seems like that probably is playing into a lot of what you're doing here, but I just was wondering if you could touch on that a little bit.
I think the research, I mean, that's a good point when we talked about career or whatever, but I think a lot of the research is that you're, you're, you're going to find success where you're the most happy. You're the most happy, you know, how do we start, how do we start exposing students, exposing children to, to, I like, self-reflect and, and look deeper? I, I mean, and this is across, I think it is even, I mean, I've gotten better at it, but I think it's so hard for people to talk about themselves. And I say this, it's hard, like, when you're doing a college application, it's, tell me about yourself, tell me your stor-, tell me your story, tell me about yourself. And it's like, it's so hard. Well, I don't know what to say, I don't have anything, I don't know what to say. So, it's like, well, no, no, just start with the basics. Tell me about who, who you are, where do you live, how many brothers-sisters do you have? I don't know if I just answered your question, but I, I get it, and I think it's, it's-
It is, it's self-awareness.
It's self-awareness. What are your values? What are your values? What are your skills? What are your interests? And is there a way that, you know, I can derive my own formula to, to live my best life? Maybe not, but-
You figure that out.
I know, I know. I mean, I'm not there yet. I'll be 40 in a, in a month, I'm not there yet, but I'm, I'm getting there.
Leor.
So, great presentation, love the energy, I'm excited about what's happening at the high school. And I think it would be helpful for parents and, and students to understand how the different grades should be sort of interacting with you, right? Because you're, there's this perception, right?
Yeah.
That you really don't think about this stuff till junior year, and you're reaching out to the middle school, so it's clear to me that you're, that you're engaging with students at all levels.
Yeah.
So, I think it would be really useful for folks to know, you know, how you're engaging with the different grade levels and, and what, what is possible for them.
Yeah, and you know, Laura asked me that question when I met with her, and she said, you know, why would a student seek you out? And I said, you know, I don't think there's a limitation. I think, I think this, this is what I think, I think this is the first year of the position, I think students didn't know, don't know, you know, well, what, can I go see her for, can I go see Mrs. Cummings for this? Is this something that she can help me? Is this something that she can help me with? Is it not? Okay, I see her. You know, hopefully that organically morphs, you know, into the way, into the into the vision. For now, I say, you know, I think the counseling department does a great job of saying, hey, we have this new role, Mrs. Cummings, go check her out in the library, you know? And I think more, you know, staff kinda get to know me, they can, you know, hey, go talk to Ms. Cummings, Mr. Frank Graves, you know, go, you know, see Mrs. Cummings and I think that's a way. Also, I think for the eighth graders, no, I won't be their guidance counselor, but they at least all had, they at least all saw me in eighth grade. They know who I am, they know my space, they've been to my space, they've seen it, they know kind of what I'm all about. So when they enter the high school, I'm not a stranger. You know, I'm a familiar face. You know, I think there isn't a restriction on why students would seek me out, and I think hopefully over time, that will that will become stronger.
So say you've got a a ninth grader that's taking, I don't know, intro to business as their elective, right, or something? And so they become interested in business or, you know, graphic design or whatever. Is is there something for a ninth grader?
Absolutely.
In your office, right?
Absolutely.
To come and explore and what kind of schools and what are the programs?
Yes.
And what should I be looking at?
Yes.
I think that would be great for folks to know, right?
And I'll tell you, I saw two sophomores recently, and I think it's like word of mouth. I honestly too think it's word of mouth. And it's like when one student's like, oh, I talked to Mrs. Cummings, like all of a sudden I have another sophomore. And it's like, okay. So I, you know, I saw two sophomores in a week and honestly, it was during course selection and they honestly just wanted me to take a look at their courses and we mapped it out. You know, we looked at freshman year, we looked at sophomore year, we kind of looked at what they were gonna take junior year, and we kind of mapped out a pseudo-senior year. You know, we did course mapping for some sophomores who just, hey, am I, you know, so, yes, for a freshman sophomore, there's things.
That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Amy.
So as the parent of a college freshman who graduated from Mrs. Buckley's internship last year, I'm super jealous that this wasn't around when Ainsley was going through, but I have a daughter in the high school now. And I guess the one thing I would say about what you were just talking about with word of mouth, I know how hard it is to get kids to do things, to go places and to advocate, especially, well, no, not even especially, I'm just gonna leave it there. And I'm curious to know, how much, how much work are you doing to put speakers in classes? In other words, to meet kids where they're at instead of expecting them to come to you? A few weeks ago, the music director had somebody come in and talk about careers in music.
Mm-hmm.
And they couldn't run away, all the musicians, they were stuck there, they had to stay. And they listened to a presentation that they really didn't wanna hear, but every single one of them came out excited about, hey, maybe I don't have to be a starving artist, but I can have a career in music.
Mm-hmm.
And look at this alumnus who, you know, worked with all these famous musicians. I wonder how much of that you can work into what, all of the things that you're already doing? Because I feel like when you get, if, when you place yourself where the kids are and you talk to them directly, then they don't have any excuse to go home and say, I didn't know, I didn't know about this program, which is kind of what I'm hearing now. They don't know about it. And how much of that is, they don't wanna know? And how much of it is just that they're scared to put themselves?
Maybe.
Out there? I don't know the answer to that, but.
Yeah.
I think there's a couple of ways to approach that. We have established at least two seminars at each grade level where counselors go in and do presentations on a variety of topics. Jen could certainly come on into some of those. We could invite, let's say in the history department, some of those career speakers, guest speakers could come in and go to each 10th grade history class. Like, you have to find kind of the the common denominators for some of the classes where we're gonna hit all the students.
Yep.
So I I think you're right, I, we, in some ways, going to them instead of having, expecting them to come to us all the time.
And I think we've done that this year, to be honest with you. I think we have with the 55-plus people coming into our school and and posting it on School ogy, because if they're not coming in by themselves, they're coming in with a group of friends. And, you know, in one college visit, I had 35 people in it. One college visitor, you know, I had the carpenters union in, I had about 20 people. And I think that's a good way because it's not singling, you know, they're coming into the space and they're able to do it with, you, their friends. Another thing is I think it's, you know, finding, finding, finding where, finding areas where you can insert yourself. And that's where the Habits for Success class. I I broke down, I, she, the teacher teaches two habits for six, two periods of habits for success. I broke down four classes, you know, I broke down, the freshmen and sophomores saw me in one class, the next day, the freshmen and sophomores saw me in the next class, then the next day, the juniors and seniors saw me. So, you know, it's where I can get myself in for cla, in class time. And I think, you know, seeking out more, I mean, that's kind of another thing that I was talking about plans, goals for the future, would be finding more places within classrooms where I'm able to slide right in and and kind of work, work, work with them on curriculum.
Great, thank you.
I have a quick question. So the job shadowing, is that like an internship or is it, is it counted for credit like that?
It's a day.
Or is it just a day?
It's just a day.
It's just a day.
Oh, yes.
You come in and shadow.
It's a day. They can come in, so, you know, it's like a lot less commitment, you know, they don't need to secure placement, it's a lot less commitment, they can go work it out any day. There's a packet, the Blackstone Valley Education Foundation, per our request, put together like a template, guidelines and and permission slips and and that kind of thing. So it's a day. And and the students reach out and we work it out and they have a packet and all that stuff that they return to me when they're done.
We envision it as a precursor to either the senior internship commitment or the school-to-career program that we hope to launch next year. So if a student is thinking about doing an internship at a bank, we try to find a job shadow opportunity for them prior to making the full commitment.
Gotcha.
That's kind of how we see job shadowing.
That's great. No, my college did a thing exactly like that, like a week of things and you just shadowed for a day.
Yeah.
And you get a lot from one day.
You really can.
You really can, depending on the day.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds to me, and like, I think some of the advice that you like to give with the kids, it sounds like when you were talking to Liz, is that things may not work out how you think it will or how you hope it does, but it will work out in the end.
It's about exploring. It's about exploring, it's about exposure, it's about, I mean, internship students, one student was like, well, it was so much fun, but I'm not gonna be a teacher. You know, and that's, but this is great.
Yeah.
You know, like, X it out. Let's move on to the next. So, you know.
Well.
Oh, hey, Mr. Carney.
Yeah, Mr. Carney. He came in, he's been cheering on the whole time. So Jennifer, I am so.
Hey, Mr. Carney. I have all my people supporting me.
So why would you not wanna come visit this woman? Did anybody have any other thoughts?
No.
Thank you so much. It's just a joy to have you. We wanted to also invite you so we could help spread the word about what you're doing.
Absolutely.
I know after I met you, I've been talking you up.
Oh!
So it's just great to have you here. And Sharon, it's always a pleasure to have you here as well.
Thanks.
So we'll probably be inviting you back.
All right.
In the future, but thank you for coming and thanks for all your work.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your time. All right.
Oh, you're a delight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Collaborative report. It's tough to follow.
Good luck.
Also a delight. Amy's like, oh, shoot, I forgot how she chaired.
No, no, no. Just need you a quick question. I'll be here to do committees another time. Are we gonna do committees another time?
Oh, no, to the next agenda, yeah.
And I won't ask.
So in terms of the collaborative report, I simply provided the committee with two reports, one from each of the collaboratives that we belong to. Collaboratives are regional organizations that provide specialized educational services, professional development and job alikes for us. We belong to the SWEC Collaborative, based out of Dudley, and the Aspet Valley Collaborative, which is a little closer to home, based out of Marlboro, but that's got Shrewsbury, Westboro, Millbury, et cetera. Anyhow, both collaboratives are doing great. We don't have a very big footprint in either. We're we're active participants. We have three students who participate in the SWEC programming and only two at Aspet Valley Collaborative. And that's really largely reflective of how much in-house programming that we've developed over the years. Any question about that? We don't need a vote, we just are obliged to put it before you two times a year.
Any questions?
Okay.
Keep on going. Superintendent Report?
Keep on and on, yeah.
Okay. I found this and thought it was cool. This is, I wanted to talk about, this is the old central fire station, or center fire station up, I think it's three Worcester Street, up by the Common. At some point during tonight's meeting, I'm gonna excuse myself, go down and talk to the select board about it, so I wanted to obviously make sure that you were up to speed on it. So our modern picture, this is today, looks a lot smaller in this picture.
Lost weight.
But when they.
It shrank.
About, it was about 2010, so it was right before I started here, the, it was no longer used as a fire station and the space was given over to the Grafton Public Schools Maintenance Department. So our small team uses it, we store three trucks, all of our snow removal equipment, plows, supplies, plumbing stuff, it's all, all in there, primarily on the the first floor. In terms of space and need, it it works for us. It just, it's fine. But the the building itself has been since day one, I believe, certainly in the past 12 years that I've been here, this perpetual unspoken tentative agreement with use of it. It wasn't, as far as I know, ever really given to the schools as, in in the sense that we don't think of it like we do our schools, where nobody's just gonna knock down our schools most likely. But every year, there's talk, especially as the Common gets, you know, grows, there's talk about knocking it down and making it into parking. So with that, every year, that seems to come up. So every year, the town side, if you will, and the school side, never put it on capital, so it never gets money for upkeep, for just, you know, regular investment as we would our schools or any of the town buildings. Despite the the neglect, I guess, it not having any real funding for it, it's held up beautifully. I went and toured it again today. It's an old building, but it's holding together quite well. About 15 months ago, we put in a new furnace. It just quit on us two winters ago and we needed to have basic heat for that space, so we put in a new furnace. But everything else works. It's it's old, it's not state-of-the-art, but it works. It could use repointing, painting of, you know, the the white that you see, it could use three new garage doors, so certainly an investment, but but nothing, you know, nothing huge, if you will. My worry is obviously, if this goes on, it's already gone on for 12 years, if it just goes on endlessly, eventually the building's gonna fail and the town won't have a choice. That will be made for us. If the ta, if the building, if the decision is made to knock the building down, demolish it, we do, we will need a space. We do not internally have a space. And I would estimate that would be 400,000 to 500,000, just for your bare bones, metal, slab building with heat, electricity and and basic utilities. So I'm gonna be bringing this up to the school committee, hoping that they can look into it and and basically make a decision going forward that will give us direction for this building and allow us to to plan accordingly.
Select Board.
Fireway.
You'll bring it up to the Select Board.
I'm gonna tonight.
Yeah.
Yep.
You said school committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify.
Nope, sorry, Select Board.
And you said that was on, that's on the agenda tonight, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any questions from the committee about this?
Well, I appreciate this. I know we talked about it years ago and they were moving forward without talking with us at one point to knock it down, so it's nice that there's some collaboration. Hopefully we'll come up with a plan on what to do and at least they know that there will be effects to the school department if the building is.
Right.
Suddenly knocked down.
Sure.
Room for a parking lot. So, thank you.
Yep, okay.
Be good to have it settled, though. Good luck.
Be good to have it settled.
Yeah, have a plan.
I believe it's been 12 years.
What else? Got for us?
These are some photos. Jennifer already talked about it just a moment ago, but we had a great event last night. I know Kristen and Liz were able to stop by. Where the students who participated in the internships, oftentimes accompanied by their employer, if you will, presented their experiences. It was, I thought it was just awesome. So I just wanted to to capture it and share it with you tonight, and I wanted to just give a thanks to all of the the different local agencies and companies that took in students. They they really, they, not one of them just kind of went through the motions, which sometimes you hear about. They were really invested in it and it was absolutely fantastic. So.
Awesome.
That was that. I just wanted to tell you about senior activities. Tonight I had the chance to go to just the first hour, first half hour of the National Honor Society reception. They did a beautiful job, as always. I wanted to thank and recognize Ryan Mercier. He stepped in. He is an English teacher with us at the high school. He stepped in when they needed a, an advisor this year and jumped in, having no idea what he was doing, and did a fantastic job. We've got, on the 25th, athletic awards, the seniors wrap up their actual last day of school, is the 25th. The 26th will be their official last day, but they're gonna go on a class trip to Six Flags. And then next week, we crank up the pre-graduation and graduation ceremony with a senior breakfast. We've got rehearsal, senior class night on the 31st, and on the 1st, we've got graduation, followed by the boin, boy, bon voyage party at Grafton High School. And last but not least, I just wanted to recognize Bridget Kaya. Bridget is the brains behind us in the video booth. She has been recording the school committee meetings for the past year.
She's giving us a thumbs up in there.
Graduate, or going to be a graduate of the class of 2023, does a great job there Graduate, or going to be a graduate of the class of 2023, does a great job there, and is just a wonderful, she's a joy to be around. Kristen and I both adore her. She's gonna be going off to Salem State next year to study education and theater. So I just wanted to offer a thank you to, to Bridget.
Yay, thank you, Bridget.
Thank you, Bridget.
And I think that's all I have. Yeah. Any questions?
I have one. Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Do we have to email if we want to go to graduation, or am I jumping the gun?
You shouldn't have gotten an email from Donna Harris.
You didn't get an invitation?
So Google, or look in your email.
I'll look at my spam, thank you very much.
I missed it, and I.
If you need help, just let me know, but usually they're.
Rebecca might not have gotten an invite yet, so we might wanna check into that.
Okay.
But yeah.
Thank you.
You should have gotten.
Glad I asked.
Yep. But I'm sure it's not too late.
Yep.
Do you got it? Any other questions? Okay, do you want to sneak out, or?
They're gonna text me when they're ready.
Yeah, and I mean, we're, we're moving through this pretty quickly, so. We don't have any students here tonight. Future agenda planning. Amy whispered, but I was gonna bring it up here. Next time when we meet, the June 5th meeting, we'll have.
June 6?
June 6, sorry. Gotta keep me on my dates. Always a day off, always. We will talk about our, our future reward with committees and things. So we'll put together a list, and also we have negotiations, so we'll assign negotiation committees, which will need teachers, paras, nurses, and custodians, so.
I had that list last year that I sent around, that had sort of an explanation. Would you like me to do that again?
Um, I, I can find it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll ask you if I need any help. And a bunch of other committees as well. So we'll do that on the 5th, 6th?
6th.
On the 6th, two weeks from tonight. Anything else?
Should we talk about what we want to do in the summer, if we want to meet? Last year, you had a great idea that we, we thought about, tried to get together for like a workshop, and we just could never make it happen, but I don't know if you wanted to talk about that tonight, or think about that for next week?
Let's think about it. I think last time too, we were exhausted, like it was such an exhaust, and I think it was great that we had the summer off. It'll depend on people's plans, and I'll connect with Jay too. I'd like to kind of know what his thoughts are with his leadership team and what we can kind of glom onto, and think about goals and what we really want to focus on next year. It's gonna be, I think, a busy year. We have some staffing changes, we have some, obviously negotiations. It's gonna take up some of our time.
It would be nice, though, to, I don't know. I, I know, I was, I liked the, the break too, and I was, you know, I thought that was really nice. But I think now that we've, we've kind of, you know, we've gone through a lot of very challenging years, and I think, I don't know, from my perspective, I'm starting to think of, okay, now what? You know, like, now what can we do when you talk about goals? And we've, at least since I've been on the, the school committee for the past three years, we haven't really had a breath to be able to do that, so.
Yeah, it'd be nice to kind of get back to some of that, teaching and learning. So I'm a big workshop fan, so I think we could probably, if we even want to get a speaker in, we can either do that over the summer or in the fall. So we'll, yeah, let's think about that, and we can, don't have to decide in two weeks either, but.
If I could, if I could just add, I think part of the issue was just that our vacation schedules last summer did not mesh at all.
Yeah.
It was like, there was always two of us out at the same time, so maybe.
We'll see, or we can even do it when we're, you know, or like I said, it doesn't have to be over the summer, but I like, I like the thinking behind it. So, but we will, it will be less rigorous over the summer, for sure. At least unless something comes up.
Don't say it.
I know, and I don't have the best track record, but Jay did tell me
I'm not gonna point that out.
that it was not my fault we had a pandemic, and that I might have been throwing too much on my. So we'll see what happens. All right. Let's see, where else? What's going on next? Approval of minutes. Pretty sure I saw some minutes.
Excuse me, getting to the, back to the.
Back to the drive. I know, I left the drive, and I have so many tabs open, I can't get back to the drive.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the committee accept the school committee minutes of April 25th, 2023, as presented.
All right, motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the committee accept the minutes of May 9th, 2023, as presented.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay. Motion carries five zero. Warrant?
Madam Chair, I move.
You sure can.
The school, I moved that the school committee approve warrant 300-05112023, W. 45, at the amount of $1,132,904.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
All right, I thought you had a discussion.
Oh, I apologize. I jumped the gun.
That's okay. I just wanted to make sure you didn't have a discussion item. All right, motion carries. Okay. We have no policy tonight.
I'd like to give an update, if I could, though.
On policy?
Yeah.
Sure.
Just an update on the procedure, on where we are and everything. Cause I, so there, a lot of it was, last time we met, we talked about this, and I gave a quick update and said, I'm working on it. And we were, if you recall, we were going through all the policies, we were separating those that we were keeping because we've worked on them over the last three years, from those that we have not been able to update because we have 280-plus policies, and transferring those to the MASC policies. So still working on it, it's just a long process, but I've gone through most of those. I've sent any policies that, just some of the policies that we had online, I noticed we just needed to add the revised date, you know, had been, sometimes we had looked at policies and we approved them as they were, but we just needed to note that in the policies online. So I've gone through, I've been working with Lynn and making sure that, that those updates are done. About halfway through with just checking everything online, to make sure it's all up to date, all cleaned up, all perfect and, and ready to go. So I just wanted to give the committee an update on that.
Awesome, thank you for doing that.
Yep.
All right, well, let me know if you need help. Any member reports?
Oh, jeez.
Liz?
They mentioned it earlier, but I did get to go to the senior internship social last night. And I just want to say how impressed I was with all of these seniors and the programs that they were, that they were offered. And I, every single student, I tried to talk to every student. Every student that I talked to, I asked them one, I asked them a few questions. One of them was, would you recommend this to rising seniors next year? And they all enthusiastically said yes. So if there's any juniors watching, you know, consider this internship program. It seemed to be great. And not just because they got to go somewhere else for the last six weeks of school. They had, they learned a lot from it. Some of them learned that they didn't like the career that they were aiming for, you know? And that's a great lesson to learn. They, they thought they were interested, and then they realized, oh, it's not for me. How, how great is that, to know that and be able to rule that out and go in a different direction? And some of them learned things, it was in not exactly the field they wanted to go into, but they had lessons that they learned from it that could apply, you know, just dealing with a boss, dealing with, with kids and different personalities, and people of different ages and situations, and, and a lot of them had internships at, at veterinarian offices, and they're out of, I think there were three or four. One of them wanted to go into veterinary science. The rest of them wanted to go into different careers, but all, they took things from it that were. So I just wanted to give a shout out to, to Jennifer and. What's it?
Jason Coe.
Jason?
That's Jason.
And, and just really, you know, let people know that that, it was a, it was, I was really impressed with everything that they had done, so.
That's awesome. So glad you went to that. I wrote it down, and it never made it on my calendar, so I'm so glad that you got to go.
If I could just piggyback on that real quick. The other winners, besides parents saving money at college, when a student realizes, maybe I don't want to do this, they spend a little bit less time trying to figure it all out, which is great. That was my daughter's experience. It, it impacted her course selection this past year. The employers love it, because they get to share with students, and they're always, they get rave reviews every time. I don't think we've had a single experience that has not yielded something positive on both ends. So if you're a business owner and you're watching, contact the high school if you'd like to take an intern, because they're always looking for spots for kids. Some of the, some of the students seek out their own. But for some kids, you need to have something to offer too. I think that's great. So I'm glad you went. I was gonna go, and then I completely forgot.
Any other member report?
I do. I went to, volunteered at NGEF Fund. Did I miss somebody?
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. NGEF Fun Fair on Saturday, it's always an amazing event, one of my favorites. Saw Christie there. Pouring rain, didn't stop the community from coming, which is great. I got to make cotton candy all day, and the faces when kids get their cotton candy, they're the best face ever! And I wish I could capture that. So a great job to the North Grafton Elementary School PTG for putting on that great event. You thought of something else?
I, I did. That's why I was signaling to Leora. Just a quick update, we haven't met yet, but just update to the committee that Leora and I did, we're finding a date. We have a potential date, but we might move it to the following week to free up some time, but just letting everyone know that we're, we're working on the legal council meeting. We'll have a little report probably next time.
We might have to meet over the summer too to talk about that.
And we were also, we're getting some information, so we're kind of waiting to have that in as well for.
And I did think of something else, just wishing Bon Voyage to the eighth graders, because they're all heading off to DC. I dropped off luggage on my way to this meeting, so I just wanna wish the eighth graders a great time. That trip is amazing, and they're gonna have a great time, and I'm happy we're doing them again. So, that's all. Just a quick shout out to the eighth graders.
And on that, I would like to congratulate the class of 2023. We won't meet again before their graduation, which is next week. Yay!
Getting a shout out in the booth.
Very excited. This is a great class. Had the pleasure of knowing a lot of them since they were in first grade, and have gotten to know many over the years. And we're just so excited for what you all do next. Come back and visit us. Hopefully someday you can have internships or come back and run for school committee, or whatever it is that you do. You know, I know you're gonna go out there and make a difference, so congratulations, best of luck to you in the future. We do not have, do we have any correspondence? I'm gonna shoot that back to you as we work.
Sure. We, I think everyone saw, I shared with everyone the correspondence that I received this week. It was either, we got a lot of correspondence from the wonderful eighth graders who had points to, to make in their eighth grade civics project, which was great. I did respond to each one of them and blind copied you. I think if I, if you didn't hear directly from me, it was because I checked and you got it separately. So I didn't want to flood everyone's emails, so everyone should have gotten all of the, the correspondence. And then we had a couple of correspondents just asking for some information, which I think you saw I responded to as well, so.
Great. Thank you. All right, and we don't need, oh, Amy.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Cause I forgot to ask it. Is this our last meeting?
No.
No.
Okay. Didn't want to let you get away without saying goodbye. All right.
We wouldn't do that.
Catch you next time.
Coming back. I just made that up.
I'll sit.
All right. Anything else? Okay. We do not need to go into executive session, so I can take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion made. It's like, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Great. All right, good night, Grafton.